Good morning, everybody, and welcome to this Monday, April 3, 2023 Lake County School Board Workshop. As we call ourselves to order, we're going to begin this morning with a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you would please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Well, welcome, everybody. We've got quite a full house this morning. And so we are going to, actually, we have a public input card and... So we'll do that first. But then also, we were considering a switch to the agenda, the order, this morning. Because we have so many folks here representing the charter applications, we will make that our 3.01 and 3.02 will become our impact fee study. And so with that, Kathy, you already knew you were our public input card and you're in place and ready to go. Excellent.
Yes, well, I figured I'd save time, but I won't take what you're saying either. Of course, HB1, we don't know how much that's going to do here for the school, for the education. But there were a couple of good things about it, but I wanted to bring to your attention the temporary certification changes.
Now, they're going to put them into law as soon as they can, which means that a teacher on a temporary certification, it will not be three years now. It will be five years for them to get their professional, which means hopefully administrators will not be so rash. We can have more reappointments this year, hopefully, and we won't have to worry about some of the certification issues. There's also a statement in there that they do not have to have the general knowledge exam, which we know that some of them have been struggling with, if they have had wonderful evaluations. So there's a couple of things in there that are really good about that. So we'll continue and do some other things with that. There's also some things about FRS that have been made some changes also. So just keep that in mind. Thanks.
Excellent. You've got quite an optimistic outlook with the silver lining. I appreciate that. Good perspective.
You try.
That's right. Well, thank you very much for sharing that this morning. And with that, we'll move into our topics this morning. The first is with the switch, the charter renewal applications. We've got a couple on the agenda this morning, first one being Pinecrest Academy Four Corners. And I see Sabrina making her way down to give us some background and history on that.
Good morning, everyone, chairman, superintendent, board members, and of course, members of the audience. If I could ask the gentleman to please pull up the presentation for the charter renewals so that the audience can follow along. Thank you so much. So as we all know, our role as a sponsor is to conduct a program review prior to your approval of renewing charter applications. And as we just stated, we have two applications that we will be providing a summary of the review of for Pinecrest Four Corners, as well as Round Lake Elementary. Get this right. Is that me or you controlling? Okay, very good. That works for me. You drive, I'll talk. We are actually on this slide that talks about the renewal and the statute, the next one, right there. So as a board, we have to comply with statute requirements in regards to renewing an application. Again, I stated that we conducted a program review, and the program review must demonstrate that the criteria outlined in paragraph A of this statute has successfully been accomplished and that none of the grounds for non-renewal has been established and expressly found. Our next slide will talk about the grounds which a sponsor may choose to terminate or non-renew an application. Again, only if we expressly find that one of the grounds set forth in the below is clear and convincing. And that would be failure to participate in the state's education accountability system or failure to meet the requirements of student performance, failure to meet generally accepted standards of fiscal management due to deterioration of financial conditions or financial emergencies determined pursuant to the statute reference or other material violations of law. And the next slide just simply gives you and the public a snapshot of what we have done to remain in compliance with statute and policy. We did our site visits. The schools submitted their applications. They did also participate in the capacity interview. And the charter committee team reviewed the applications. We are here today at the workshop. And hopefully, next Monday, these applications will be on for board approval. And then we will begin contract negotiations because their contracts do expire in June on the 30th. And as always, I want to thank and commend our district team for serving as our charter review committee. Next slide, please, sir. These individuals again spend countless hours reviewing the applications in an effort to provide you with the information you need as a board to make your decisions. Next slide. So before I begin the specific reviews of each application, I want to just bring your attention to the core indicators that we will be looking at today. They will be in the areas of educational performance, financial performance, and organizational performance. And the ratings, these are the benchmarks for the measuring of each focus area. Meets the standard, and the description is there as well. Partially meets, the description is there. And also, if it does not meet, that information is there as well. Next slide. And we do use an evaluation instrument. It's where we summarize all of the ratings provided by the committee. And at the end, we will make a recommendation, which will include a summary comment for each application. And now we will begin with Pinecrest Four Corners. We do have members of the administration, their governing board, and their ESP in the audience this morning at the conclusion of the presentation for their application, if you wish to ask any questions of them. So before I begin the presentation, I would like to turn your attention to some items that you have in front of you. You should have a copy of the evaluation instrument, the question and answers provided during the capacity interview, and any additional documentation or information that was requested after the capacity interview. So I'll give you a minute to find those documents for Pinecrest. Next slide, please, sir. So this is a summary of the committee's review of the application. We will start looking at the educational performance section. There are three focus areas in this section. State accountability, you will see that there were 12 ratings of meet the standard, one rating of partially meets. School-based accountability, there were 12 meets the standard, one rating of partially meets. And the educational plan was unanimous, 13. In the area of financial performance, you will see financial management, there were 14. And financial viability, there was 14. I want to explain that discrepancy. Our finance team, they were not able to participate in the capacity interview, but they did review their section of the application. That's why you will see a discrepancy in 13 and 14. So I want to clarify that. And then the last section is organizational performance. And student enrollment and conduct, all 13. Governance, staff, and parents rating, 13. And facilities, 13. So unanimous from the committee in those sections. Next slide, please, sir. So the summary comment was that although Pinecrest Four Corners has partially met the standard as much as fully met the standard related to accountability and assessment. The fact that the school's first year was that of the pandemic and has produced limited data from which a true analysis can be made or observed. It is too early to reach a definitive conclusion without additional data, especially in light of the fact that their ELA math and science results so far are not entirely inconsistent with those of the state and the district. That explains that those two partial meets for that first section because there was not enough data to determine if it fully met the standard. Next slide, please, sir. So the overall assessment from the committee is to recommend to the superintendent for approval of the renewal application for Pinecrest Four Corners. I do want to add a note that Pinecrest has requested a 15-year contract based on statute. They are eligible for that request because their last school grade was that of a B. But again, that is something that can be done through negotiations. But I wanted you to be aware that they did, in their intent, submit that as a request for a 15-year renewal. Are there any questions for me, the committee, or the members of the team from Pinecrest?
Or any questions for staff first, or do you have any questions for Pinecrest as well? Anybody? I appreciated the organization of all this information where, you know, you would throw out, we'd like, you know, here's a follow-up and boom, there's the link that we could just click and see right there the statement directly back from Pinecrest. So I think that was just really, really helpful.
Great, great.
And navigating all the information.
Anything else?
Mr. Mazzola did have one question.
Oh, yes. Go ahead.
So this renewal period is for what period of time?
It will start this year, and then they're asking for 15, but again, it didn't mean...
What would it typically be if it wasn't 15?
It could be, it has to be a minimum of five. Yes, sir, a minimum of five is what they're eligible for, but because of statute, they are eligible if the board so chooses to grant their request of 15.
And are we supposed to provide some guidance today on that timeline?
You don't have to.
Provide feedback to the superintendent as she makes her recommendation or...
Yes, sir. Once we vote on the application, then we'll start the contract piece. So if you wanted to give us information and feedback at that time, you could, or if you wanted to do that now. But we do have 40 days after you all approve next Monday to begin those contract negotiations. Mr. Myers will be facilitating that process.
I'm reluctant at any time to go 15 years. I just want to put that out there.
And the rationale, or I guess that, not necessarily the rationale, the qualifications that would allow them to qualify for a 15-year contract. Can you explain those? What makes them, based on one single grade of a B?
Yes.
Really?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And the statute reference is 1002.33, Section 7, C2. And it states that a 15-year charter that may be granted pursuant to the subparaphrase granted of that of a school that has received a grade of A or B in their most recently graded school year. And that they're not in a financial situation. And again, such long-term contracts are up to reviews. And if there are issues, then the board could definitely address those at that time.
And are also in place, there are some parameters that automatically generate the 15-year?
Yes.
Okay, and this doesn't meet that threshold?
Not this particular application. Our next one, we'll talk about it at that time.
Okay, very good.
What's the difference in the threshold?
High performing. So if I'm high performing and my grades have been A and B over a period of time and the state has designated the school as a high-performing school, they are auto 15, non-negotiable.
Multiple years, where this is the one year because of COVID.
Right.
So that would give them a...
Why would we not want them to prove, get to that threshold?
Right.
And make it easy?
And that would be definitely your decision.
Hundred percent.
I agree.
So if we approved their application and we approved the five years, they have to wait five years before making a request to have the extension of the other 10 years?
This particular contract, this, excuse me, this particular school, we would do, let's just say you decided to do a five-year contract. They would have to come back through this process all over again in five years. The application, the review at that time, unless something changes with their school grades in those five years. And then the state designates them, let's just say they do become eligible for high performing, then it's auto 15.
Auto 15 without coming before the board?
They don't have to come before the board.
I think that's reasonable.
Right. We'll just redo the contract and then go from there.
Well, we can't vote, but I'm just saying whatever.
That's right.
This is just discussion. This is just, this is just information for Mr. Myers and I as we work on...
He may get some sense of the world of the board.
Well, I'm looking at this, excuse me, I'm looking at the statute anyway. It's the 15-year charter renewal that may be granted, must be granted if they've received a school grade of A or B in the most recent year. So I don't think you have leeway anyway, to be honest.
Oh.
So that's a must for this one?
It must, must be granted.
But I misinterpreted that.
Yeah.
I thought it was May.
But the charter subject annual review and maybe term...
I read it as May.
Pursuant to the other statutes, but it's a must be granted. It's not a, you don't have...
With one year of data.
With one, with one year?
One, single?
So subsection 1 says a charter school is operating for a minimum of three years and demonstrating exemplary academic programming and fiscal management are eligible for the 15-year charter renewal. Then the next subsection says that the 15-year charter renewal that may be granted pursuant to that previous subsection must be granted to a charter school that has received a school grade of A or B pursuant to Section 1008.34, the most recently graded school year, and is not in a state of financial emergency or deficit position. So as long as they're not in a state of emergency and their fiscal matters are in line and they've got a B in the last year, you have to give them a 15-year.
Well, we have an attorney. Perfect.
Okay, forget everything I just said.
Me too. As well as I. I misinterpreted the statute. I read it as May for the one year.
But Pinecrest is requesting a 15-year.
Yes, sir, they are.
So if they're requesting, okay, so wait a second here. Did you all think that you were entitled to the 15-year as a must? Or you were requesting it because you thought that you were eligible, but it's not guaranteed?
Fernando.
Well, do you want to come up, Fernando?
Yes, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the microphone so we can get you on record there.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Fernando.
Fernando Baroso, I work for Academica. We're the education service provider for Pinecrest. I cannot 100% answer that question. I'm assuming if it's a request, if they felt that they were entitled to this, I think it wouldn't have been a request. But I don't really have clarity to answer that. But if I, if you want an answer, I would think it's a request. And if it's approved next Monday, like Ms. Banks says, we'll go to charter contract negotiations with Mr. Myers. And, but, you know, a request doesn't sound like a man.
So...
That's, that's how I would...
No, thank you. Thank you for that candor. So perhaps maybe over the next couple of days, if you wanted to take a real close look at those statutes for us and...
Well, look at the legislative history. It's been changed, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 times since their initial charter was approved. So I'll look to see what that looks like and why.
Okay, very good. All right. And certainly, if you're entitled, if the must occurs by statute, then the board would be certainly compliant with statute, you know, so.
Quick question, Sabrina.
Yes, sir.
What is the definition, or generally speaking, of a dire financial position or whatever? I know there's always some gray areas. Are we looking at fund balance? Are we looking at deficits? Are we looking at what would be the criteria for that scenario on the financial piece?
I would have to pull up the statute because I don't want to speak out of turn. But from my understanding is if they are unable to pay their bills, for lack of a better words, and there's been a trend of that, our finance department has reviewed their financial statements that are submitted to us, and there are issues there, I would then say at a minimum that would qualify. And this school that we're speaking of, there haven't been any issues or concerns with their fiscal situation.
And forgive me, this is year what for this school, Pinecrest Four Corners has been?
Well, their original contract was approved in 2018, which makes it sunsetting five years, which would be June of this year. Yes, sir.
And then they were a B this past year. Do we know what they were the previous couple of years?
Because of COVID, I'm afraid, because everybody got a year of grace.
Yeah.
Their last...
Were they trending to being high performing prior to COVID?
I would have to research and get back to you on that one.
I'd like to know.
Okay, sure. I'd have to see what, we could take a deep look at their data. Okay. Any other questions about Pinecrest?
So if I recall, I think that they don't have the same 4% or 3% rule on fund balance. Is that right? So that doesn't apply to them. They could be sitting at 0.2%.
Scott, do you have any idea what the dire emergency financial would?
Basically, it's extreme dire. It's not a fund balance issue. It's they can't make payroll. They can't make IRS payments. They can't do those kind of things. And even if they can get a loan to cover that, even if they don't have enough revenue to show that they're paying the loan as long as they got the cash to be able to make the payments, the state says they're not dire.
Okay. Just to dive in a little bit further, and perhaps Fernando, this might be another question for you on this particular one. As I know, when you all first opened there, I don't think you had quite the enrollment you were hoping for in the first year or two. And so did the, did Academica or anybody need to insert some money into the school to help its financial state?
Did not. Pinecrest, Inc., they did support, as they do in a lot of startup schools as a network, did help out, but I am happily to say that the enrollment, just like the area, has grown and things are great.
Do you know where you are now with enrollment?
Next year, we should be, that building is capped at 750, and we are capping it at 650 next year. And then the following year, I'm pretty sure we'll be at the 750.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that one. And I think you've got a second one to share with us as well.
I do. Segues actually nicely into the review of Round Lake. And again, we have members from Round Lake here in the audience with us as well. And I just want to remind you that you do have copies of their evaluation instrument, the questions from the capacity interview, as well as the documentation. Next slide, please, sir. So this does segue, as I said, into the status of Round Lake. They are a high-performing charter, which does qualify them for a 15-year automatic renewal. And we did request that they come before the sponsor because the last time their application was reviewed was in 2008, 15 years ago. And we asked that they resubmit, update the application, and go through the process, which they gladly did. Next slide, please, sir. So for the review of their application, in the area of educational performance, the focus areas for state accountability, school-based accountability, education plan, it was unanimous, 13 meets the standard. Financial performance section, their focus areas for financial management, financial viability, again unanimous with the addition of the finance department's review. And organizational performance section, student enrollment and conduct, governance, staff, and parents, and facilities was a unanimous 13 for that section as well. Next slide, please, sir. So the summary comment is the documentation in Round Lake's renewal application related to the state and school accountability is detailed and all-inclusive. They have thoroughly communicated everything related to testing and accountability. The attention to detail is commendable. Next slide, please, sir. And the overall assessment for Round Lake Charter is the committee's recommendation to the superintendent is the approval of the application for Round Lake. And that concludes the two presentations. Do you have questions for me, the committee, or Round Lake team regarding their application?
Very thorough.
I just, a couple of comments that I thought, as I read through this one, that were rather surprising to me. One was, I guess, there's an intent to eliminate the busing, but based on the survey they conducted, they found out like that would only provide, create a barrier for like a couple of kids.
Yes.
So I was surprised by how many kids don't think that they need the bus. And then...
You've never driven on that cutoff road before, clearly.
And then the other, the other one was the addendum to the student progression plan there with their retake policy. And I guess just candidly, I'm going to say this looks like the most complicated thing ever. I would have to hang this up on the fridge to keep track of because every grade and every subject has different criteria for what generates a retake and how that retake is then computed into the grade, whether it's average or it's highest grade or no grade at all. It looks incredibly complex. But I know, being a charter, y'all can do what you want, but I don't know. I don't know if that's too complicated for most folks to understand. That's just my feedback on that one.
Did you want anyone from Round Lake to speak to that, or you just...
I don't know. I guess if you have maybe some background, or you want to provide some background on that, but...
Good morning. Lake of Barburger, from Round Lake Charter, principal. That is set up because our main goal and mission is that no student sits in the classroom and goes backwards at all. There's no reason for that.
Right.
So we utilize all our teachers. We allow them to do what they know is best for their students. Some opt to do the retakes, some opt not. Some opt to do the retakes, some opt not to, depending on the grade level. We do sit down with our parents right at the beginning of the year, explain the process for the grade level that their child's in. Yes, it looks complex to you, but you don't have a child in every single grade, so for our parents, it's very...
Well, actually, I pretty much do.
For our parents, it's very simple, spelled out at each grade level. And so they are able to utilize that and ask any questions. You know, we have everything laid out as much as possible for them so that they understand what we're looking for.
Oh, no, I...
Because we want the students to succeed, but we want them also, it's not a matter of getting that A. It's a matter of mastering the content within their grade level and their standards.
No, I understand philosophically with everything you just said. I just, because, you know, in some subjects it's a 60, sometimes it's a 65, sometimes it's an average, sometimes it's the highest score, sometimes it's a no retake. It's just different in every subject across every grade level.
Yes.
And I don't know how you keep track of that unless you hang this paper up. But maybe y'all have figured out how to keep track of that.
No, our teachers know what they're doing and our curriculum specialists. We've all been together for at least 15 years, a lot of the core staff and people. So it's consistency.
All right, very good. Thank you. Board, do you have any other questions for staff or for Round Lake Charter?
All right, very good. Well, thank you for that, and thank you Sabrina as well.
You all.
And so we expect those renewals will be on Monday's agenda. Is that right? All right.
Sure.
All right. Excellent. Thank you very much for that. All right. And with that, we'll go into what originally was advertised as 3.01. Thank you all for your patience, but we thought this impact fee study would just be so riveting that we're going to want to spend some more time on this one. So we appreciate you flipping the agenda. All right, so welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Superintendent, Board Chair, Board Members. I am joined by Negan Camp with Benish, used to be Tyndall Oliver. So Negan has actually done our last two impact fee studies for us in 2015 and was adopted in 2019. And so she is pretty much recognized as one of the impact fee experts, especially in school impact fees. She not only works for us, but she has worked for a lot of other districts. There's a lot of expertise and just background knowledge. I'm going to talk about the technical details of the impact fee first, I think, and then we can go into how to approach it.
And what'd you say, what your first name was?
Negan.
Negan Camp?
Negan, okay.
Okay, is that working better?
Thank you.
Good morning. Oh, there we go. So the presentation is organized in four areas, starting a little bit with background, overview of impact fees, findings, and then the next steps.
And I'll note, she did make a few changes, so it may not look exactly the same as you go through the presentation.
Okay.
But we'll go ahead and update that in Board Doc.
As Kelly mentioned, the fees were last updated in 2019, and that's the routine update of the technical study. It helps meet the requirements of the public agencies showing that their studies are correct and required by the legislation.
So now, as you mentioned that, and I'm sorry to jump out with such a question so early. One thing I noticed is that in all the comparison charts with other districts, there were some that were just so antiquated, you know, one all the way back in 2005.
There's one in 1985.
Okay, that one's even worse. So...
So the legislation says the studies need to be based on most recent data, but it does not define recent.
Okay.
And now, a study in 1985, if they are ever challenged, they can't say that their study is valid. But when the fees are very low, the chance of being challenged is pretty minimal.
I see. Okay, all right. So this request for us to do this study again, was this really at the request of the county commission, or is this?
So the county's implementing impact fee ordinance, actually says that we will look at it a minimum of every three years.
Okay.
And so that's something that, you know, we'll discuss as we go because now there's some conflicts with state statute.
Okay.
But, you know, that was the impetus to go ahead and renew the study.
Excellent. Okay, thank you so much.
The impact fees by definition are one-time capital charge to new development, and their goal is to cover the cost of new capital facilities. And they cannot be spent directly on maintenance renovation, but they do help those programs by freeing up general tax dollars. And they help implement the work plan, capital improvement plan, and so on. Their main goal is to maintain the level of service. They calculate the cost of growth. They are most needed when there are high growth rates and limited alternative funding. So Lake County, when we compare Lake County to other 67 Florida counties, it's a larger county, 17 in terms of population. And it's growing rapidly. It's ranked fifth in projected population growth rate, which affects you more than the absolute growth because it's in relation to your base, and 11th in absolute growth. So it's being projected that you would add another 215,000 people by 2050. So that growth is putting pressure. Your student generation rate is in the middle, so that helps a little bit. It's not as high as some of your surrounding counties, but still with the growth, there's a pressure to add stations and build facilities.
So does that mean most of the people moving to Lake County are older without children?
You're in the middle, so it's a mix. It's families and retirees, seems like, compared to, say, Orange County. But then there are some other counties that have even lower generation rates.
Okay.
This is a quick, random one, and if you know it, I'm going to be shocked, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Do you have any idea what our student generation ranking roughly was in 2019? Are we generating more students than we used to with?
So your traditional students, you'll see that the generation rate is decreasing,
Yep.
like around 10% or so. But overall, I need to look, it may be stable because it may be made up by charter schools and virtual schools.
Just know we've made a much bigger push on growth, obviously, but also growth in the single-family side and not being as much of a haven for retirees. We still like retirees and want them, but more families are moving in. So just seeing that 36th in student generation rate was interesting to me.
Yeah, so that's sort of right at the middle and average, so, yeah. The study methodology is what we call a consumption-based methodology, which is also your adopted methodology. It charges new growth for the value of the school infrastructure it's consuming. And the way it's calculated, it ensures that the rates are not generating sufficient revenues to cover existing deficiencies. That's one of the legal requirements. We can't charge new growth more than their impact. So the basic impact fee formula looks at cost to provide school infrastructure, and really that's the school buildings, land, and so on primarily. From that, we subtract any non-impact fee revenues contributed by new development that will be used for capacity. So to the extent that district uses capital millage, a portion will come from new development. So they get a credit, so they are not being charged twice, once through the impact fee and once through the millage. And that net cost gets multiplied by demand, and that's measured in terms of students per housing unit. So these are, impact fees in Florida were mostly governed through case law until about 2006. Then we had the Impact Fee Act passed, and has, you know, multiple requirements and evolved over time. But some of the key ones is that the fees be based on most recent and localized data. There's a 90-day notice requirement once they are adopted for them to be increased. If there's a challenge, the government has now the burden to prove that their fees are correct. It used to be the other way around. And then we had, in 2021, House Bill 337 was signed, and that placed some limits on how much the fees can be raised and how they need to be phased. And also it added the requirement that they cannot be increased more than every four years. So that's what Kelly was referring to. And she'll go over these more in detail in her section. As far as the technical study, before we get into the detail, I just want to show you how each variable is affecting the fee. So compared to last study, cost per student increased, so that has the effect of increasing the fee. Credit per student decreased. That means there is less alternative funding going to our capacity, so that also increases the fee. And then for single-family mid-sized home, the student generation rate decreased, so that decreases the fee. So overall, the net impact fee increased about 30% for a mid-sized, single-family home. There are several variables of the fee, and yeah, I'll go through them. We start with the inventory. We are including only the traditional schools. We are not including charter schools, private schools, or virtual. And there are about 42 of them.
Just to note, so in Lake County, because we're unusual with the conversion charters, we do include conversion charters with traditional schools. We do not include the non-conversion charters.
Why would that not be considered? Because it seems like it would...
Non-conversion charters?
Charter schools, yes, non-conversion charters. Why would they not be considered?
Charter, so actually, there's legislation, so there are two reasons. One is, this is really the schools that school district has full control over. You decide where to build the traditional schools, but you don't necessarily decide where to build the charter schools. There's also a statute that almost limits the use of impact fees on charter schools unless it can be shown that they are directly mitigating a need for a traditional school. So it's difficult to even use impact fees on charter schools. So then, if we put them in and increase the fee, because now there's their inventory, their students are in the fee, but then we can't go ahead and build them, we are creating sort of a windfall without really providing the facilities.
So what you said is inventory. Those kids are considered, though.
The charter students are not included in our calculations. It's only the traditional.
We don't have to build facilities for those kids.
No, I understand that, but I'm just wondering why the students wouldn't be included? Because if the students weren't going to charter, they'd be going to our schools.
So it does factor into the student generation rate. So those students are not...
That's what I was asking.
Right. So those students are not included in our student generation rate, and that's actually one of the reasons, as we go through, that you'll see that our student generation rate drops because we've had such a growth in charter enrollment.
That 100% makes sense.
Right. So it does factor into the calculation, just not directly in those numbers.
It actually lowers it for us, which is, I guess, reasonable.
Facility service delivery, we look at the type of schools the district is building in terms of square footage per station. And these are based, these are consistent with your current schools as well as some of the recent ones that were built. So it's 135 to 160 square feet per station. Facility costs are to include all costs related to build a school, anything from architectural design, site preparation, construction, furniture, fixture, equipment, lamp...
I'm sorry, one quick question on the last one, on the school sizing. When we're building these K8s, are we building those to the middle school levels, the 194, 863 roughly?
They're actually a little bit smaller.
Okay.
They're kind of right in between an elementary and a middle school.
So when we estimate the cost, we review anything that school district built or has estimates for. We look at the insured value of the existing buildings, recognizing that's the low end. And then we look also at what other jurisdictions are building on a per-square-foot basis. So based on all this, we estimate the total cost, including all the variables, to be about 390 to 425 per square foot. That is multiplied by the square foot per student station, gives us a cost per station ranging anywhere from 53,000 to about 67,000. Now, Department of Education plays limits how much the districts can spend on student station costs. They have published costs. And if the districts exceed that, there is a penalty, regardless of the funding source. So most districts are trying to meet those by changing their design standards and so on. So when we incorporate DOE limits, then those per-station costs go down to about 30,000 to 40,000 per station. So it's about a 40% discount almost. So that's the number we are using, the lower number in the calculations, which makes the fee really conservative compared to what the local costs are showing us.
I had a question on the stations there. I think there's a discrepancy between this presentation and the study. It references 4,000 planned high school seats, but the study references 2,000.
Oh, maybe that's the typo.
Because when we build the new high school, right, or we're not anticipating 4,000, right?
Right, it would be 2,000, no, it would be 2,000.
And then, and I think I was reading some methodology here, and when we talk about K8s, those students are being considered as middle schoolers or...
So for enrollment, we split them.
Okay.
And so, but yeah, that's the typo on the presentation. I apologize. It should be, under high, it should say 2,000. I mean, all the numbers are correct, otherwise, except that instead of 2, it got typed 4.
You're saying the weighted average to build a new school today with today's market is $410 a foot?
Yes.
But we're, of course, going to comply with these DOE limits, so do we like build it out of sticks and twigs?
We're going to attempt to comply with those DOE limits. I think DOE realizes that they, you know, they need to update those numbers. They have not been adjusted for the most recent costs of construction. There's been a whole lot of discussion at that level, back and forth. But we are going to attempt to, can I promise you we will?
So, and I can certainly appreciate the attempt. As a taxpayer, right, I obviously want my, you know, money to be spent wisely and conservatively. But now, if I'm just kind of thinking about the implications of this, where it doesn't really cost $36,000 to build a student station, but even if this impact fee is approved at 100%, sounds like it's being fully funded, but it's really not. Is that right? Based on, because if it really costs 60,000, but we're only going to collect potentially 36, it's still not even really fully funding.
But it costs 60,000 based on that 410 a foot, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So if the 410 a foot's artificially high, then the, to your point, we're still not fully there, but I think we're a little closer.
Right.
If it's really 350 a foot, or I still think that's high. But any decrease from 410 is going to help drive that 60 down and get closer to that 36.
Yeah, I think that's just an important point, is the county commission starts to look at this and says, wait a second here. Whoa, what's going on with this impact fee? Well, it's still not even...
It is still not reflecting our cost of construction over the last two projects that we've done.
That's right. You're right.
We then take the cost per student station and convert it to cost per student. And that's really looking at the ratio of enrollment to capacity. So if the district has additional available capacity and wants to continue to have that as an operational capacity, we can actually charge for that. But your adopted standard is 100%, one station per student. So we really maintain the same figures going forward as a cost per student as well.
Sorry, I've got one more on this one. Based on the facility cost per student here, the 3% shortage, et cetera, is that based on actual enrollment with charter students being where they are? Or is that based on the numbers that says, do we actually have a 3% shortage in capacity? Or is that just what the numbers are saying, if that question makes sense?
This is your permanent stations.
I think he's back on the one before that.
I know, but it's also showing like 103.
On the next one.
Yeah, so like, yeah, those are, yeah. Those are taking the student stations that are paid for with non-impact fees and comparing to the actual traditional school enrollment.
Yep.
So you have, basically, you have a 3% shortage in elementary, 12% availability in middle schools. Overall, this is a county-wide basis, 2% shortage. So when we combine them all, the cost per student station is within 1% of, if it was 100%, because a little bit up, a little bit down, kind of.
Well, like on your next slide with the data that was helpful, so you're saying we currently have 19,316 students, give or take actually enrolled, public school students, and we've got the capacity for 18.7 or whatever it is?
Right.
So that's our students here, not our students, including the charter students at Pinecrest or whatever else that's not in these numbers.
But that's permanent capacity. So it doesn't mean that we don't have a seat for those kids. They're just importables, so.
Got it, okay.
In addition to school buildings, we also include transportation and ancillary facility costs. And those are the maintenance buildings. costs, and those are the maintenance buildings, transportation buildings, and so on, and they are relatively small. It's, transportation cost is about nine hundred dollars per student, ancillary is about fourteen hundred dollars per student. We then look at how the district is funding capacity projects, so you are using capital millage, other, and if there's any outstanding debt service related to capacity, we also recognize a portion will be paid by new growth. So we subtract those from the cost. So overall, with all the components, cost per student is about thirty-nine thousand, and then the credit is about fourteen hundred, so the difference is thirty-seven thousand or so of net cost. And then, student generation rates are calculated based on matching the student addresses with the property appraiser database to see what type of unit they are coming from. And this study, we expanded the land uses. It was a sort of initiative that the county started when they were updating their fees, and their concern was affordable housing, and so they wanted to add some categories, recognize maybe smaller homes, have more limited impact, and separate the categories. So we looked at it from that perspective, tiered the single-family. Right now, all your fees are single category, without any tiering for size. We tiered single-family apartments, and then also separated condominiums and townhouses. So those larger decreases is because of that, because instead of combining everything, a small home tends to generate fewer students. But overall, it looks, it's about thirteen percent decrease compared to the last study in the generation rate, and just how it affects land uses varies. The other note that here, even though we did this, we had limited data on condominiums and townhouses, and you'll see another option where they are really incorporated into a single-family and multifamily, instead of being separated. So then, we take the generation rate, multiply it by net cost per student to come up with the fee. So you can see, for single-family, small homes, it would be a decrease of about twenty-five percent. For homes that are greater than eight hundred square feet, it would be an increase of about thirty percent. And then, in this scenario, again, fees are decreasing for most categories, except for larger apartments, and there's an increase of about fifty-four percent there, and then the mobile homes, thirty-four percent. So this is the second option, where I think, from a data perspective, it's more reliable. We combine townhouses with single-family, which is really what the property appraiser does as well, and then the condos with apartment duplexes to a more overall multifamily category. So then, our changes are, you know, sort of moderated in some sense. So the single-family, oh, this is, again, the student generation rates, and again, you can see, like, the decreases are anywhere from six percent to about fifty percent for the smaller homes.
Yep. You do the, you do the impact, or your company does, for the county as well?
Yes.
Did they, have they combined those categories?
What, yes, they did. They actually, so, also, their fees, transportation is based on trip generation, and that one, they were able to separate townhouses. We have trip data, nationally published trip data on those. But all other fees are persons per housing unit, and we don't even have the data to separate the townhouses, in that case, and the same thing with the condos. So, most of their fees have this structure, you know, single-family and townhouse combined, and all the multifamily combined. Just transportation is able to separate townhouses.
Thank you.
So you can see here is then, again, larger single-family is increasing about thirty percent, still not much change there. Smaller ones are decreasing, and then the apartments, the increase is now more like a forty percent range, as opposed to fifty. Next couple slides give you the comparison, and this is, again, we ranked all the counties by low to high at their hundred percent single-family rate, which is the very last column, and we are showing the study date, so you have a sense how old the data is, as well as adoption percentage, which is a policy decision, so you can see what different jurisdictions decided. So this, and then we highlighted in blue the counties that are near you. Now, Marion County is updating their fees. They suspended it for many years. We're updating their fees right now, along with preparing a school master plan for them. And the county itself is also updating their fees, because they are feeling like there's a lot of growth going on. So that will get updated. But anyway, this group is ranging from twenty-five hundred to seventy-eight thousand, I mean, seventy-eight hundred. Are those prices, I'm- And then, here, it's the second group continuing on, it's from eighty-two hundred to about almost thirteen thousand, and you can see Lake County is at eighty-nine hundred right now, and then the calculated fee is about eleven thousand six hundred or so. And then you can see the surrounding counties, Volusia, Orange, Polk, Seminole, Osceola. With that, I think maybe we'll move to Kelly's presentation, or-
Are there any questions from Ms. Camp before we move on to the staff part portion?
I think I had some questioning about the, you're figuring on the price per acre when we need to acquire land.
Mm-hmm.
I think you had landed on one hundred and ten thousand per acre, and it looked like the last couple of land purchases certainly exceeded that, and I don't see that cost going down, and so, can you help me understand how you arrive at that?
Oh, that's in the study. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's-
I'm looking back through the presentation. So she would have gotten those figures from us, and that would have been a basis of predicted costs for our upcoming wellness way purchases, and then also our last couple of purchases. So, you know, they, we don't do a lot of land purchases. We had the, the purchase in Lake Hill, or at Howie, I still call it Lake Hills, the property that we purchased in Howie, and then actually those single-family purchases that we made near Eustace and Mount Door Eye. And so, those kind of, all together, tend to average around that, that one ten.
Yeah, it seems to range like eighty-five thousand, one hundred fifty thousand. We had one exception, that was a very expensive quarter acre, but that's-
Yeah, that was a very expensive quarter acre.
But that, we're hoping you don't have to spend that all the time.
But I think, I think where I'm confused is because you computed the weighted average cost to be a hundred and thirty-four thousand per acre.
Mm-hmm.
But given the weighted average cost, you ended up on a hundred and ten thousand for impact fee calculation purposes.
That's because of that fifty acre that I think the district is negotiating at one hundred fifty thousand per acre. So, land, land makes up a pretty small portion of the cost.
Sure.
So if anything, we want to be on the conservative end, if it is, but, I mean, there is room to adjust, if you like. So we basically looked at, also, like, how much the land values increased since the last study overall, and we say it's about thirty-five percent. In last study, we used eighty thousand, so we applied that and came up with one-ten, and we felt that one-ten is between eighty-five thousand and one hundred fifty thousand per acre, unweighted. So that felt somewhat conservative, but reasonable. But I mean, if there's, you know, any more data, there is room, I mean, we can justify it to probably a hundred thirty, that was the weighted average or so.
So I guess where I'm thinking then is that this would be another one that we would highlight to the commission, that we're being incredibly conservative here. You can see we're about to buy fifty acres at a hundred and fifty thousand an acre.
Right.
We're only using a hundred and ten thousand as our, as our figuring here.
Yeah. So we want to make it as defensible as possible as well. And so, you know, where we, where there was a judgment call to be made, we basically went for the more conservative side of that, and erred on the side of caution.
Okay, I understand.
And if you wouldn't mind putting up the staff presentation. So where do we go from here, now that you've heard all of that? So House Bill three thirty-seven was passed in twenty-twenty-one, and basically, that set a, a standard for increasing the impact fees. So essentially, we cannot increase more than twenty-five percent, and if, I'm sorry, that makes it sound really bad to start with. Basically, if you have an increase of twenty-five percent, it has to be in two equal annual increments. If you have an increase of between twenty-five and fifty percent, it has to be in four equal increments. Does not specifically say annual, but, but we have, again, airing on the side of caution, basically have interpreted that way. And you cannot increase the impact fee more than fifty percent at any, any given time. So, and you can't increase the impact fee any more than once every four years. So, all of that, although, there are some exceptions, based on a, a demonstrated need study, and there is some language here, expressly demonstrating the extraordinary circumstances necessitating the need to exceed the phase-in limitations. So, basically, if we were going for a more than fifty percent increase over the current study, there would be a process that the Board of County Commissioners, in conjunction with the School Board, would have to go through. But that actually does not apply to us in this case, because we are not going to ask for an increase over fifty percent, if a couple of things happen. So this were the, this is the recommended fees per the study, with separate condo and townhouse categories. We've already gone through that. It does have, provide for some fairly high increases, including a fifty-four percent increase in the apartment and duplex greater than eight hundred square foot category. But, as we discussed, the condominiums and townhouses, we feel are not optimal categories, and the Board of County Commissioners apparently agreed with that. There are some data issues. Condos can be anything from a RV park site to a single-family house, and so that, that makes them difficult. They're, they're kind of all over the board. And townhouses are not actually a category in the property appraisers, they are a tag. So if a subdivision comes in and it's tagged as a townhouse subdivision, townhouse, town home is in the name, then they will go ahead and, and tag it that way, but it, it results in a really small sample size, and I don't think that it accurately identifies all of the townhouses that are in the county. So, you know, if they're in a subdivision where they're mixed with single-family houses, they may possibly be left out of that, and we haven't gone through and looked for all of those townhouses, but, but we feel like it's too small of a sample size to create an effective student generation rate. And as Mr. Mathias observed, it appears that the county feels kind of similarly to us. So once we went through and we added the condos to the multifamily category, and the townhouses to the single-family category, it actually changes the impact fee and, and results in, in lower increases. Those smaller student generation rates then affect the student generation rates for those other categories, and so the, the student generation rates be, kind of become moderated across the board on those tiered categories. So we have a, a increase of twenty-nine percent in the greater than eight hundred square foot, single-family townhouses, and we have an increase of thirty-eight percent in the greater than eight hundred square foot multifamily, at this point, apartment duplex condo category. And that regulates the fee as well. So the fees become slightly lower in some of those categories. This is actually a comparison between the, the calculated fees and for, with the townhouse and condo separate, and then the townhouse and condo integrated. You see that there is a drop in that multifamily greater, or I mean, I'm sorry, the single-family greater than eight hundred square feet, from eleven-six-thirty-one to eleven-five-fifty-five. In the multifamily greater than eight hundred square feet, it actually drops from eleven thousand sixty-six dollars to nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars. I think that that will probably help with the county's affordability initiatives that they've done. They've been a great partner for us with all of the different impact fees programs that they're working with, the waiver infill program, the, they have a alternate impact fee study process for, for apartments. We may not see nearly as many of these after this process comes through, because it does take into some of those, those factors that, that we were seeing in those alternative impact fees, looking for, at smaller units and that kind of thing.
And some of those alternative refer to the studio, sort of?
Yes, yeah, basically. There's a process whereby if a developer is going to build mostly studio or one-bedroom, they can actually submit an alternative impact fee study to us. It's a whole process, we can approve it, and then basically, they can pay a lower impact fee, having bonded the remainder, and then we go back and we look at this student generation rate for that particular development, and, you know, if it's higher, there's a process, but we haven't actually had to do that yet.
And that process would still exist even our-
That process is, is under the county ordinance, so those developers would still have that alternative, unless the county changes.
Okay.
So, this is actually our recommendation, is that we would request that the townhouses and condominiums be integrated into those single-family and multifamily housing categories. And also, looking back at the state statute, that says that, you know, you can increase over four years. If you are going for a full fee increase, that we would go for that full fee increase over the four years. That results in no capping of the fees at twenty-five percent, or fifty percent, or anything like that, and therefore, no, no discounts. If we want to talk about that, we can, although my brain still spins from that conversation. One of the things that we looked at is the actual average permits that we've, that have been issued over the last eleven years, based on the size of those units, and we estimate if we look at those same per-year numbers, over the next four years, at these fees, we would estimate a collection of about ninety-point-six million. If there's, this is probably the most important slide, honestly, if there's any questions on that.
Well, I mean, just listening to the number, ninety million, at first, sounds like a lot. However, when you look at the construction cost between Lake Point and, I mean, or-
Ninety million will probably not pay for a high school.
No, no, that's not going to cover it. And so, so we're talking about this potentially being fully funded, but in reality, it still falls very short.
Right.
But I do think that we also have been under hyperinflation, that it's going to stabilize. So I, the county commission has been very honorable, because there was a time when we only got forty percent of, so, but I, and so I think this conservative approach also says, we recognize construction cost hyper, land cost hyper, that we're, we're really betting that it's going to balance, which is very defendable, in my mind.
I really hope that it starts to balance, because-
Yeah, if you study, we are going under sticker shock. Jurisdiction, you know, governments give us their bids. I just saw one thousand dollar per square foot. Really?
Ooh.
For a public safety building. Thousand dollar per square foot. They're like, yep, such-and-such, build it.
And so, if the, if the commission adopts any sort of increase to these fees, they're locked into that for four years. We can't, there's no other increase that comes in four years, unless they have a two-thirds majority or something along those lines, is that right?
Well, they put in place, if it's still, if everything stays the same, and all we're talking about is dollars, but at, the last time, they, they had a unemployment trigger, that if, if, and I don't know-
In greater session, maybe?
Yep. That was, that was put in place, and if it was four percent, they could come back, and, and it would sunset for a second until unemployment went back down again. That's what I remember.
Yeah.
And four percent may not be the right number, but it was definitely a trigger that would stop them.
It's kind of ringing a bell, but yeah, that was, that was quite a while ago, and I haven't looked back at that.
Yeah, that was, that was, that was the first time they fully funded us. That was under Mr. Connors.
Right, when we get back up- Right, when we got back up to the, to the full funding.
And that was, that was a concession.
After the war period.
Mm-hmm. And the other was the infill, which, which I think's been very successful, by the way, because there's some lots around here that have been built on that allow those infill lots. So we've, we've negotiated in good faith, and I don't expect this to be any different.
No, I think they've been a great partner with us, and, and, you know, if you look at, um, some of those counties where they haven't been, uh, fully funded, or they haven't been, um, updated in quite a while, we're in much better shape than those counties are, um, because of the partnership that we have with the county, where basically they have fully funded us. Um, you know, I think some of these other districts, they're, that new state statute is probably going to cause them some issues, um, because they haven't been fully funded. So they're going to have to go for, if they try to, to increase their fee, they're going to have to go for, uh, an extraordinary.
Three hundred percent. I think to Mr. Dodd's, to Mr. Dodd's comment, we ought to say fully funded to the study. Maybe add that.
Fully funded with codicils. Um, so we did look at a couple of other options. I don't know if you want to take the time to, oh, I'm sorry. And there's the option, one fees by year. Um, so basically, this looks at what it would be, um, annually based on a, a seven-point-two-five percent increase for the, um, single-family greater than, than eight hundred. That gets us to that twenty-nine percent total increase in year four. Um, and then the same kind of thing with the apartments and duplexes, it's nine-point-five percent per year, and that gets us to the total increase of thirty-eight percent, um, in year four. And, um, and then the same thing with mobile and, and manufactured home parks. The lower, or the smaller size, um, apartments and single-family houses, those are increases over the years.
Kelly, for the sake of conversation, on the greater than eight hundred square foot single-family home, would you say there'd be any real benefit to us at looking at being at that cap of twenty-five percent, because then we could look at the increase over two years?
So that is actually option three.
Great.
So we did look at that. Um, and basically, and this gets into the conversation of proportionality that had, Negan had, this is why we hire an expert, because my thinking was incorrect, um, when we first put this out. And, um, so basically, what happens is that if you look at capping at, yes, capping at twenty-five percent, option three, if you look at capping those apartments that are greater than eight hundred square feet at twenty-five percent, that basically gives that, uh, that category a ninety point, or it's ninety-point-five percent. It gives it a nine-point-five percent discount. In order to, um, to keep proportionality, so that every category is kind of paying their same proportion of.
We can't just move one.
You have to, right, you can't just move one.
Thirty-eight percent on the apartments or whatever it is.
Yeah, so then you have to give that same discount to the single-family. And because the single-family is the largest category, and it is the, the largest revenue-generating category, then, um, that actually has a significant impact.
Option is.
Yep. So that's why we, we, we started with that one, thinking that would be the best for us, and then Negan dragged us back into reality.
This is just another place where this is very conservative, because we're, even at fully funded, under all these conservative parameters, we're talking eleven thousand five fifty-five. But we don't actually collect eleven thousand five fifty-five until.
Not until year four.
Four years from now, so.
Right, right. Um.
And that's by statute.
That's right.
And that is by statute, yeah. So, so yes, I mean, I think, honestly, when I say it's the best option, it's the best option in a, um, not the best world.
Right.
So, for us. Um, okay, so our next steps. Uh, basically, we feel like we should request that Benish amend the report, if you, the study, because the study does not include that, um, integrated townhouse and condominium. So we would request them to, to amend that, um, so that we have a, a final study that, um, reflects that. And then, once we have that, we will come back to you as a board with the, um, amended technical report. There's a board action that, um, you would accept that technical report, and then any recommendations that you wish to make to the, the Board of County Commissioners, um, as far as going forward. They are the implementing agency, so you are just making recommendations to them. Um, and we see those recommendations as being that integrated, you know, the, the tiered single-family, tiered multifamily, and then mobile home park, no townhouses or condominiums, um, and then pursuing the adoption of the full impact fee over the four years. And then one final thing is that, um, as we said, their implementing ordinance actually requires us to look at it every three years. Since it can't be increased, except for every four years, um, I think we should request the county amend that implementing ordinance to reflect every four years. Honestly, it'll just save us a little bit of money.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? So if I'm a developer, I, I, do I have the opportunity to prepay impact fees at the lower amount, or do the impact fees, are they paid as they come online?
The statute change recently said they cannot be collected before building permit. It used to be, there were some counties, they had agreements like that with developer, they got a discount if they paid it.
We have that, right? Kelly, we've done that.
Uh, we did, previously.
Until now.
Until now.
Okay. All right.
Right. So, you know, they, they do have an impetus.
I actually, I actually think that might be a good thing for statute, very honestly. Let them pay as they come online.
They do have an impetus to, uh, to get their building permits in as quickly as possible, James.
Thanks.
Great presentation.
Any other questions?
Great presentation. Thank you both.
Appreciate it very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So we will have a, a board action, um, maybe at the end of April. We'll see how quickly we can pull that together. And then we'll be working with the Board of County Commissioners as they move forward. It's actually, they cannot have the raised fee fully. I think, uh, Negan and I calculated, um, probably the end of December, because there is a ninety-day provision. So, so it'll just kind of move through the process through the rest of the year.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Kelly.
All right, excellent. Thank you all very much. And, uh, looks like that brings us to the end of our topics on our agenda for today, so move into some board member comments. If you have anything to share.
Nothing today.
Stephanie.
I'm good, thank you.
Molly.
No, thanks.
I'll also defer to our general meeting on Monday. Superintendent?
I'm, I'm good.
Okay. Attorney?
Nope.
Oh, right, it's always good when the attorney has nothing to say. And, um, and then, of course, don't forget, we've got some executive sessions following this particular meeting, so don't, don't run away. No objection to adjourning? We are adjourned.